Thank you. Chair, before you has Resolution 23-216, and we're asking Nalani Fujihara from the Office of Council Services, the Hawaiian Language Communication Specialist, to assist us with this resolution.
Through the mic.
Koho'olale ana ike kia'aaina e ho'omau ike kumukana vai okumoku'aino Hawaii'i ne. Ame ke kanavai vai okumoku'aina ma'o kaho'i ko'ke ana ya Marvin Kaleo Manuel ike kulana hopemua nokapaku mikina vai.
And this is the title of the resolution in English, urging the governor to uphold the Constitution of the State of Hawaii and the State Water Code by immediately reinstating Marvin Kaleo Manuel as First Deputy for the Commission on Water Resources Management.
Member Ronald Fernandez.
Mahalo, Chair. I move to adopt Resolution 23-216, including any non-substantial revisions under Rule 19D of the Rules of the Council.
Thank you.
Moved by Member Ronald Fernandez, seconded by Member Johnson. Adopt Resolution 23-216, and waive the rules of the Council. What is it, 19D? 19D. Discussion, Member Ronald Fernandez.
And it's not waiving it, it's invoking it.
I'm sorry.
Chair, this is the first resolution in Olelo Hawaii in its entirety. It's more than just symbolic. Mr. Manuel is fluent in Olelo Hawaii, and I wanted us to extend our gratitude to him to the fullest way possible. And communicating this in our Olelo o'ke'aaina is one way. We heard hours of testimony last Wednesday at the Westin from Kumu and Ha'mana asking to support education grounded in the Hawaiian worldview and values taught in our language. Our governor and our government and community must then follow up the education with meaningful jobs after these Ha'mana graduate. Ms. Fujihara, born and raised here in Maui, returned from college, was one of the applicants for this Hawaiian Language Communication Specialist position this council established. This was a budget priority of mine. I spearheaded and received unanimous support from you all about three years ago. So, in honor of this being our first resolution in Olelo Hawaii, may I request that our Hawaiian Language Communication Specialist, Nalani Fujihara, read the resolution in its entirety.
Ms. Fujihara.
Olelo ho'olo, halu i'va'kalua kumakolu, e lu'a hane li'umikomaono. Koho'olale ana ike kia'aaina e ho'omau ike kumukana vai okumoku'aino Hawaii'i ne. Ame ke kanavai vai okumoku'aina ma'o kaho'i ko'ke ana yak Marvin Kaleo Manuel ike kulana hopemua nokapaku mikina vai. Oe'ei he'kuleana'ko'okumoku'aina oyano ke'kuleana e ho'omalu e ho'oholo a e ma'ala ma'ika ho'ohanaana ika vai o Hawaii'i ne no'kapono okolako ma'okanaka. He'olalo ke na o ke kumukana vai okumoku'aina o Hawaii'i. A, oe'ei malalo kapauku umikumakahi, mahale'e hiku o ke kumukana vai okumoku'aina. E ho'omako ka'aha olalo ka'okana vai inamea lako no'ke kahi hui vai. Ma'ala ma'ia e ke kanavai. E ho'omalu o ika vai ke'ano amena kule'kele ho'ohana. Ehevehe inamea vai vai amena kumu no'ka ho'ohanaana. Ho'omalu ika vai honua amekavai ili. Na'aina kumu vai amena kahavai ku lohe-lohe. Ho'okumu inaloina no'namaka koho, ho'ohana vai. Oe'ei koho'omalu, ho'omau ana inamea e ponoae a ho'okumu inaloina no'ka ho'oholoana ika vai o Hawaii'i ne. A, oe'ei ikamakahiki, umikuma'iva kanavalukumahiku u'a ho'oholo ka'aha olalo ka'okana vai oko Hawaii'i moku'aina ike kanavai vai okumoku'aina i'kumakuna ho'okahi hane li'umikuma, kanahiku kumaha, kalamei se, kapayo Hawaii'i revised statutes. A, olalo'ia e ho'omalu inapono Hawaii'i ku'una amena pono Hawaii'i pa'amao. Koho'omalu ana ame koho'opulapulaana inai'a amena holo-holo na lohiu. Ka ma'ala ma'ana ike kalae kaya'ola ame kanani ona hi'ohiona'aaina. Ame koho'omau a ho'oka'oeana inavai okumoku'aina no'kahana o ke kulana ka'ohale. Inamea ho'onaneo kalehulahu, ka vai no'kalehulahu ka'oe'ana mahi'a'e ame koho'okeleana. A, oe'ei i'kumakuna ho'okahi hane li' kanahiku kumaha se o Hawaii'i revised statutes, u'a ho'okumu'ia kapapaku mikina vai ayanalo'e akoku'a ika ike vai maloko u'a hui ne imea e ho'omau vai ike kanavai vai. A, oe'ei ma' Hawaii'i ne o ka vai oyano kameanui no'namea olaa pau ame ke kahi vai vai no'ho'kahu o kalehulehu. No'layla oyano ke'kuleana okumoku'aina e ho'omalu ika vai no'kapono na kupu. A, oe'ei u'a ho'okumu'ia kapapaho'olala o Maui Island Water Use and Development Plan e'kahu'i o Maui Department of Water Supply a pono'ia e'kahu'i o Board of Water Supply. A'ia e ka'aha kalana. A, a pono'ia e kapapaku mikina vai imea e ho'olala'e ika ho'omaluana a ho'oholoana ame koho'ohanaana inavai ma' Maui ne no'namea ho'ohana pau ikava o i'va'kalua ma' okahiki. A, oe'ei ho'okumu kapapaho'olala o Maui Island Water Use and Development Plan ina kule'kele he'lima malalo no'ka ho'oka'oeana ike'olo na kahavai ame koho'oka'ulike ana inapono ke kaya'ulu. Ho'omalu a ho'oka'oe inapapaku kahavai a ho'ole ika ho'ololiana inakahavai. Hana pu'mena hui ku pono imea e ho'okumu'a ika palana'iki o ke kahevai. A ma'ala ma'ike kahevai imea e ma'ala mai inakaya'ola kamahikalo amena ahupua'a. Aloha'aku'a imipu inaha'ina no'napilikia'e pili'ana inapono'aina amena pono vai ona Hawaii'i. Oe'ho'i ka'aina ku'leana, ka'aina ho'oku'ua'ilike amena pono o ka'oe'ana mahi'a'e ame ka'ohi'ana. Ho'opaa inakanavai amena kule'kele no'ke kahevai ona kahavai i'ike'ia i'ke kumukana vai moku'aina ame ke kanavai vai. A, hana pu'mena hui ku pono amena pa'oe'ana imea e ho'okumu'a ika palana'iki o ke kahevai. Ho'opai pai inahanakako'okaya'noho ame koho'ohanaana inalo'i ame kamala ma'ana ike kahevai ona kahavai no'ka ho'ohua'ana inakalo. A, oe'ei vahia kapapaho'olala o Countywide Policy Plan ea ke kahipahu ho'opai'i. Ho'oka'oe ika ho'oholoana ina onaihana vai imea e inu ole'a ika vai ili ame ka vai honua. A, oe'ei ho'opai pai kapapaho'olala o West Maui Community Plan i'ka ho'ouluana inalo'i ka'emi'ana ika ho'oka'ava'le vai ili ame koho'oko'eana ika vai no'kahana kinai'ahi no'ahale mana'aina kuleana. A, oe'ei e kahemau ka vai makalo'i imea e ha'na'ia'i inamea kanu maloko. Ahe' onaihana ho'olao'pai. Ho'onui'ia ka vai makapapaku vai honua a ho'ohana ike kaya'ola ahupua'a e mahi'ikanui onamea kanu amena holo-holo na. A, oe'ei luku'ia no'ho, luku'ia no'ona'i hana e ho'olupa-lupa ina ahupua'a inamakahiki umikumavalu ka'okani ame umikuma'iva ka'okani. Mamuli o koho'ka'ava'le'iaana ona kalani he'ma'umilio na i'ala'e enaluna mahi imea e ho'oulu'a i'kala'ko ma' mea kanu. Me koho'ne'eana ina Hawaii'i ame koho'ololiana inamea la'ola'ona inamea ho'okele vai vai amena hi'ohiona mo'omeheo o Maui ne. A, oe'ei inamakahiki umikuma'iva kanavalukumavalu a umikuma'iva kanavalukuma'iva. Vehevehe kapapaku mikina vai inaloina kap'ia o interim in-stream flow standards or IIFS a ka'ea ke kahemau loina no'kamea ma'amau i'ka hapanui'a kamanaava oyano koho'ka'ava'le'ana inakahavai. A, oe'ei ikamakahiki e lu'a ka'okani u'a ma'ua e ka'aha ho'okolo'olo ki'e'ki'e o Hawaii'i i'ke koho'e pili'ana i'ka jihia o wayo'ole ditch contested case. U'a koho'ka'aha a ole ku'pono IIFS no'ka ho'omauana, ho'omaluana inakahavai. A ha'ha'e ole o IIFS ike kanavai. A u'a koe'ia ke kumikina e no'i'i i'ke kahie o ke kahavai a ho'omohala inaloina o IIFS i'kumoku'aina holo'oko'a. A, oe'ei u'a hana o Marvin Kaleo Manuel ike kulana hopemua no'kapapaku mikina vai ma'ikamahina o iwanu'ali makala' i'va'kalua kumavalu. Ikamakahiki i'va'kalua umikuma'iva. A hiki konaho'ono ho'ou'iaana e ke kia'aaina o Green Lawa o Don Chang kaluna no'ho kahu'i o Board of Land and Natural Resources i'kamahina o a'oke makala' umikuma'ono i'kamakahiki i'va'kalua i'va'kalua kumakolu. A, oe'ei i'ke'ia kava o kahopemua o Manuel ike kulana hopemua no'kapapaku mikina vai u'a i'ke'ia ikamana'o nalala o ke kaya'ulu he'nu'i loa kahu'ohua o ke'ia va'no ke kumikina. A, oe'ei i'kamahina o Apelila i'kamakahiki i'va'kalua i'va'kalua kumaluwa me ke koku'a o kahopemua o Manuel u'a a'ke kumikina i'ka ho'okumuana i e lima maua IIFS no'kumoku'uni o Molokai. U'a ho'oi ka vai ya'kavela hikina ka'omano o kavela hikina o kavela komohana o lu'a lohe ame ke kahavai o way'kolu. Ke kahavai i ho'oka'ava'le'ia a ho'omalu'oe'ia no'ke kahi kene'kul'ia a oe'aku. A, oe'ei i'kamahina o Apelila i'kamakahiki i'va'kalua i'va'kalua kumaluwa. Ala ka'ike kapapaku mikina vai ya'Launio Poco Irrigation Company e hui pili ya'West Maui Land Company e ho'oi ka vai i'ke'ava'va o kau'ula mamuli o kala'ko aha'e ole'ana ya'IIFS. U'a ho'opio'ako ika vai me koho'olaha ole inakanaka noho. A, oe'ei mahope o ke kahemau ke'ke'ke o ke kako'oo ma'ke kaya'ulu ame kamala ma'ole'ana ika vahi a ohe'imea ho'omalu u'a hapai kapapaku mikina vai i'kolako no'i pono'i'i. E ho'okohu i'kapapaku mikina, papaku vai honua olahaina i'ke kahi vahi kapayo Surface Water and Ground Water Management Area. Mamuli o ka'ike'pili i ho'ili'ili'ia e kahopemua o Manuel amena lima hana. U'a ailo kahi'ia ke'ia i'kamahina o yune i'kamakahiki i'va'kalua i'va'kalua kumaluwa. A, oe'ei u'a i'ke kahopemua o Manuel i'ke ko'oi ko'oi o koho'okohu ana'aku ya'lahaina i'kamahina o ke'ke mapa i'kamakahiki i'va'kalua i'va'kalua kumakahi. U'a ho'emi na hui pili'ino i e'ono miliono ka'la'ni'a o'i i'ala'e. Ma'ke kahi mahale o kapapaku vai honua ma' honokoa'e. O kapalana'ui o koho'emi'ana ika vai oyano e'ono mau miliona i'kala'ho'ohahi. A, oe'ei u'a a'ia koho'ohanaana ika vai i'kapapaku vai honua ma' honokoa'e. U'a ho'ohana'ia kanalima kumakahi pake neka a o'e o kapalana'ui a kanavalukuma'iva pake neka o kapalana'ui no'kapapaku vai honua ma' Launio Poco. A, oe'ei u'a a pono ka'aha kalana ya razo i'va'kalua kumaluwa kanahiku kumakolu imea e kakoo'oa'e i'kapapaku vai honua ma' lahaina. A ho'okohu u'a papaku vai honua ne i'ke kahi mahale vahi kapayo Surface Water and Ground Water Management Area. A, oe'ei i'kamahina o nove mapa i'kamakahiki i'va'kalua i'va'kalua kumaluwa. U'a ho'ouku kapapaku mikina vai ya'Olualu Water Company e hui pili ya'West Maui Land Company. E ha'haneli kanahiku ka'okani ame kanalima mau kala no'ahanaku'e inaloina kahevai no'ke kahavai o Olualu. A, oe'ei i'kamahina o nove mapa i'kamakahiki i'va'kalua i'va'kalua kumaluwa. U'a ho'ololi kapapaku mikina vai ya'IIFS no'umikumaluwa ma' kahavai amena a'mana i'ka vahi ohu'alo ma' Maui hikina. U'a imi'ia ke kahi'ala e ho'ololi ina onaihana o East Maui Irrigation imea e ho'omalu'a inakahavai. A, oe'ei u'a ho'ono ho'ou'ia kapapemua o Manuel ma' konaku'ana hopemua no'kapapaku mikina vai i'kamahina o a'oke makala' umikuma'ono i'kamakahiki i'va'kalua i'va'kalua kumakolu me ke kumu'ole. A, oe'ei i'ke kahi ho'olaha nu'ho i'kamahina o a'oke makala' umikuma'ono i'kamakahiki i'va'kalua i'va'kalua kumakolu ke kia'aaina o Green Lawa o Don Chang kaluna no'ho o kahu'i o Board of Land and Natural Resources. Olelo'ia, deployment does not suggest that First Deputy Manuel did anything wrong. I'ke'ia manava no'layla ho'oholo'ia e ka'aha kalana o Maui. Ho'opai pai i'ke kia'aaina ame kahu'i o Board of Land and Natural Resources e ho'omau ike kumukana vai okumoku'aino o Hawaii'i ne. Ame ke kanavai vai okumoku'aina. Ma'o kahope ko'ke, kaho'i ko'ke ana ya Marvin Kaleo Manuel i'ke kulana hopemua no'kapapa komikina vai. Ho'olale ike'ana e ha'ha'e i'ka'aponana o ka'aha kalana ya'olalo ho'oholo i'va'kalua kumaluwa kanahiku kumakolu e kakoo' i'kapapaku vai honua olahaina a ho'okohu u'a me'ane i vahi i'ka vahi o Surface Water and Ground Water Management Area. A, ho'olaha ina kopiku halu o ke'yo olalo'ailike i'kamea hano'hano o Josh Green, M.D. ke kia'aaina moku'aino o Hawaii'i. Kamea hano'hano o Sylvia Luke ke kia'aaina Luca Nella moku'aino o Hawaii'i. O Ronald Pauchi Pelikike'ana aha'kene'konan, kene'ko'a moku'aino o Hawaii'i. O Don Chang lunano'ho kahu'i o Board of Land and Natural Resources moku'aino o Hawaii'i. Na'ala'la o kapapaku mikina vai kumoku'aina o Hawaii'i. Ame kamea hano'hano o Richard T. Bisson Jr. me'ya kalana o Maui.
I just want to mahalo. Pa'epa'elima, Ms. Fujihara. She was the one who translated it all in, well, she and Kakao translated that in just a few days. Super impressive, and I wanted her to be the one to read that so that our kupuna could hear your voice. But we can have it read in English too. Mahalo, Ms. Fujihara.
Chair, reading the resolution in the English translation, Resolution 23-216, urging the governor to uphold the Constitution of the State of Hawaii and the State Water Code by immediately reinstating Marvin Kaleo Manuel as First Deputy for the Commission on Water Resource Management. Whereas the state has an obligation to protect, control, and regulate the use of Hawaii's water resources for the benefits of its people as mandated by the Hawaii State Constitution. And whereas, under Article 9, Section 7 of the Hawaii, of the State Constitution, the legislature shall provide for a Water Resources Agency, which is provided by law, shall set overall water conservation, quality, and use policies to find beneficial and reasonable uses, protect ground and surface water resources, watersheds, and natural stream environments, establish criteria for water use priorities while assuring pertinent rights in existing correlative and riparian uses, and establish procedures for regulating all uses of Hawaii's water resources. And whereas in 1987, the Hawaii State Legislature enacted the State Water Code, Chapter 174(c), Hawaii revised statutes, which states adequate provision shall be made for the protection of traditional and customary Hawaiian rights, the protection and procreation of fish and wildlife, the maintenance of proper ecological balance and scenic beauty, and the preservation and enhancement of waters of the state for municipal uses, public recreation, public water supply, agriculture, and navigation. And whereas, Chapter 174(c), Hawaii revised statutes, established the Commission on Water Resources Management, composed of volunteer experts in water management to oversee the implementation of the Water Code. And whereas, in Hawaii, vahai is essential to all life and is a public trust, making the state responsible for protecting it to the benefit of all its citizens. And whereas, the Maui Island Water Use and Development Plan was drafted by the Maui Department of Water Supply, recommended by the Board of Water Supply, approved by the Council, and adopted by the Commission on Water Resource Management to plan for the protection, management, and use of water resources on Maui by all water uses over a 20-year period. Whereas, the Maui Island Water Use and Development Plan establishes the following five policies to enhance stream vitality while balancing community needs. Protect and enhance natural stream beds and discourage stream alteration. Work with appropriate agencies to establish minimums, minimum stream flow levels and ensure adequate stream flow to sustain riparian ecosystems, traditional kalo cultivation, and self-sustaining ahupua'a. Respect and participate in the resolution of Native Hawaiian residual land and water rights issues, including kuleana lands, ceded lands in historic agricultural and gathering rights. Ensure that stream flow implement, ensure that stream flows implement laws and policies found in the State Constitution and Water Code. And work with appropriate agencies and stakeholders to establish minimum stream flow levels, promote actions to support riparian habitat and the use of available lo'i, and maintain adequate flows for the production of healthy kalo crops. And whereas, the Countywide Policy Plan makes it an objective to improve the management of water systems so that surface water and groundwater resources are not degraded by overuse or pollution. And whereas, a West Maui Community Plan encourages expanding lo'i restoration, decreasing surface water diversions, and ensuring water for fire protection of homes on kuleana lands. And whereas, lo'i requires continuously flowing water to sustain the crops growing within. And as a regenerative system, maximizes aquifer recharge and creates an ahupua'a ecosystem that cultivates an abundance of native plants and animals. And whereas, the systems that make it a thriving ahupua'a were destroyed in the late 1800s and early 1900s when plantation owners diverted tens of millions of gallons of water a day from streams to grow their crops, displacing Native Hawaiians and changing Maui's social, economic, and cultural landscape. Whereas, in 1988 and 1989, the Commission on Water Resource Management defined its administrative rules governing interim in-stream flow standards, known as IIFS. But these standards were for status quo conditions, which in most cases were diversions of all base stream flows. And whereas in 2000, the Hawaii Supreme Court overruled the Commission on its judgment on the Wa'ohole ditch contested case, and the court held that the current IIFS were not adequate to protect streams or comply with the law and required the Commission to take immediate steps to assess the stream flow characteristics and develop quantitative IIFS statewide. Whereas, Marvin Kaleo Manuel served as the First Deputy for the Commission on Water Resource Management from January 28, 2019, until Governor Green and Don Chang, chairperson of the Board of Land and Natural Resources, redeployed him on August 16, 2023. And whereas, Deputy Manuel's time as the Deputy for the Commission on Water Resource Management is seen by members of the community as one of the most productive times for the Commission. And whereas, in April 2022, with Deputy Manuel's assistance, the Commission approved the establishment of five IIFS for the island of Maui, returning water back to East Cavela, East Cavela Tributary, West Cavela, Lu'a, Lu'a Lohe, and Way'Kulu Stream, which has been almost fully diverted and often dry for more than a century. And whereas, in April 2022, the Commission on Water Resource Management also directed Launio Poco Irrigation Company, Inc., a subsidiary of West Maui Land Company, Inc., to return water to the Kahula'ula Valley after they failed to meet IIFS and turned off water without notice or explanation to residents. Whereas, after decades of community advocacy and clear environmental degradation of the area, absent necessary protections, the Commission on Water Resource Management put forward its own proposal to designate the Lahaina Aquifer Sector area as a Surface Water and Groundwater Management Area based on data collected and analyzed by Deputy Manuel and staff and unanimously supported in June 2022. And whereas, Deputy Manuel recognized the urgency of acting to designate Lahaina, as in December 2021, the Honokawai portion of the aquifer had private entities withdrawing 6.5 million gallons per day in excess of the sustainable yield of 6 million gallons per day, the maximum amount that can be withdrawn without risking permanent harm. And whereas, authorized planned use of groundwater in the Honokawai Aquifer exceeded the sustainable yield by 51%, and the Launio Poco Aquifer would be at 89% of the sustainable yield. And whereas, the Council adopted Resolution 22-73 to support the Lahaina Aquifer Sector area designation as a Surface Water and Groundwater Management Area. Whereas, in November 2022, the State Commission on Water Resource Management fined Ulualu Water Company, Inc., a subsidiary of West Maui Land Company, Inc., $470,050 for repeated violations of in-stream flow standards for Ulualu Stream. Whereas, in November 2022, the Commission on Water Resource Management amended IIFS for 12 streams and tributaries in Hualua region of East Maui and explored how to modify the East Maui irrigation system for better, to better protect in-stream uses. And, let me show them on the right picture. Whereas Deputy Manuel was redeployed from his role as First Deputy for the Commission on Water Resource Management on August 16, 2023, without cause. And whereas, in a press release on August 16, 2023, Governor Green and Don Chang, chairperson of the Board of Land and Natural Resources, stated that his deployment does not suggest that First Deputy Manuel did anything wrong. Now, therefore, being resolved by the Council of the County of Maui that it urges Governor, that it urges the governor to uphold the Constitution of the State of Hawaii[1518.64] that it urges the governor to uphold the constitution of the state of Hawaii and the state water code by immediately reinstating Marvin Kaleo Manuel as First Deputy for the Commission on Water Resource Management. That it urges the governor and the Commission on Water Resource Management to honor the Council's adoption of the Resolution twenty-two dash seventy-three, which supported the Lahaina Aqua First Sector as a surface water and groundwater management area. And the certified copies of the resolution be transmitted to the Honorable Josh Green, M.D., Governor of the State of Hawaii, the Honorable Sylvia Luke, Lieutenant Governor, State of Hawaii, the Honorable Ronald Pa'uchi, Senate President, State of Hawaii, the Honorable Scott Seiki, Speaker of the House, State of Hawaii, Don Chang, Chairperson for Land and Natural Resources, State of Hawaii, the members of the Commission on Water Resource Management, State of Hawaii, and the Honorable Richard T. Bisson Jr., Mayor, County of Maui.
Any further discussion? You discussed it already. But okay, you see, twice. Okay, let's go with you before, I don't want any debates, Member Rollins Fernandez.
No, I, I, I didn't discuss this yet. I just introduced Nalani and invited her to read the resolution. I know it was a very long resolution. And it was read twice in its entirety in Olalo Hawaii and then in English. I, I never, I never spoke to it yet though. So, I spoke to the last one. But mahalo, Chair. I, I can't stop crying. We've just had so much taken away from our people that sometimes you forget how numb you have to force yourself to be just to function. And then when something is returned, all the emotions come flooding back. So mahalo, Nalani. Ke kuleana e ho'umalu'a e ho'oyo. A'e ma'ala ma'au ikaho'ana ana ikanavai. O Hawaii'i ne no kapono. O ko'olako ma'au kanaka. In Water and Power in West Maui intentionally entitled that to echo Land and Power written in nineteen ninety-five. It says, "The plantation has persecuted these Hawaiians by having them arrested and forcibly taking their water. And because one or two have been instrumental in getting their rights, it has determined to crush the whole settlement in Ka'ula Valley." As leaders, we represent the people. We are responsible for holding other leaders accountable to the people too. Today, one of the testifiers asked, "Who is your boss?" My boss is the kupa'aina of the people of this place. Who is the boss of the governor? A question posed and left unanswered by words. But we are left with only actions that demonstrate who the governor is accountable to. An article entitled "State-Aided Disaster Capitalism" that appeared in Kauai'ola a few days ago helps to piece together more clues to answer the question of who is the governor's boss. For over a century, the plantation Luna have battled for control over water, systematically separating people from aina, systematically separating the people from vae, despite laws being written to protect this connection. Community is working hard to stop land grabs from offshore profiteers and speculators. Working to stop land grabs from state-aided efforts is far more hurtful. History repeating itself. West Maui Land Company and its affiliates have a long history of diverting streams for luxurious fic farms at the expense of Maui komahana, kalo farmers, kuliana owners, and water lets. During testimony, we heard, during, we heard testimony after testimony describing the food forests of Malu'ulu'olele, that there seems to not be enough water. But there used to be, and there can be again. If water wasn't consistently being extracted without equal or more effort of water being returned. I asked the testifier last Wednesday if it's, that is not enough water. Whether it, is it a matter of how water is used? Golf courses, resort pools, water features, landscaping, laundry, corporations stockpile water to sell luxury estates. Many community members like myself suspected the governor's removal of Mr. Manuel and the subsequent suspension of the Lahaina Surface Water and Groundwater Management Designation as the opportunistic removal of obstacles to the continued misuse of water by West Maui Land Company and other large-scale consumers in the area. As Mr. Tanaka article in the Kauai'ola outlines, West Maui Land Company's claims were disproven. Water diverted by the company could not be used in any way to fight the Lahaina fires. These suspicions only grew. In the following week, a smoking gun would demonstrate clear government collusion with a corporate water diverter seeking to exploit the tragedy. On August twenty-third, the Hawaii Supreme Court heard oral arguments over the state attorney general's petition for a writ of mandamus against Environmental Court Judge Jeffrey Crabtree. The petition sought to overturn Crabtree's modest cap on the amount of East Maui stream water that could be diverted by real estate investment trust Alexander and Baldwin. Filed on August ninth, the petition declared Maui is in peril as it is ravaged by wildfires and claimed there's several instances that the thirty-one point five million gallon per day cap on Maui Hikina stream diversions left the island with not enough water to battle the wildfires. This claim quickly fell apart. The representative from our county corp, corp council confirmed that there in fact had been sufficient water to combat up-country fires under Crabtree's order and that the Maui Fire Department had not made any request for additional water. Moreover, over the course of five days, the Maui Fire Department had only used thirty-seven thousand gallons of reservoir water for firefighting. Orders of magnitude far less than the millions of gallons of Maui Hikina water that had been available every day for firefighting. Dozens rallied the day after Manuel's deployment, expressing their gratitude for his work with Hula and Lei. The next day, a group of prominent families of Lahaina, Na'ohana'olele came together to demand that Green give impacted families time to process and grieve and sit to the Lahaina community in any and all conversations about rebuilding and redevelopment. In their testimony, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs writes, "Oha is deeply concerned with and cautions against enabling the weaponization of threats from wealthy abusers against good state and county actors, a practice that has resulted in usurpation and destruction of public trust, public trust resources, and native Hawaiian way of life by private interests." Mr. Manuel upheld the state's trust obligation to native Hawaiians and the general public by ensuring that water, a public trust resource, was not being diverted away from native Hawaiian mai'a kalo, engaged in the exercise of constitutionality, protected traditional and customary practices by West Maui Land Company, a real estate developer whose subsidiary, Oluwalu Water Company, was fined four hundred and seventy thousand, fifty dollars for repeated violations of the interim in-stream flow standards of Oluwalu Stream. Ko'i ko'ke ana ya Kaleo Manuel ike kulana hopemua no kapapa komikina vae. Ko'i kanani imoku'ula. Mahalo, Chair.
Any other, Mr. Sinancy?
Oh, Chair. I had the opportunity to work with Mr. Manuel last year during the Water Use Development Plan proceedings. And I know from working with him that Mr. Manuel truly understands the public trust doctrine and the state water code and the huge responsibility to uphold them. As this resolution states, Mr. Manuel has worked hard to enforce the interim in-stream flow standards and the groundwater sustainable yields as set by the Commission. Unfortunately, this has put a target on him 'cause developers want as much water as they can get. Developer needs are in direct opposition to the public trust when they demand more water than is allocated to them. Chair, we need government officials to uphold the state constitution. And unfortunately, Mr. Manuel was being blamed for doing his job, simply doing his job. And we need to support government officials that do their jobs, Chair. But the B L N R is sending a dangerous message to all government workers that if you protect the public trust over private interests, then you too are at risk of losing your job. I just wanted to mahalo, Member Rollins Fernandez, for bringing this forth and speak in support of the resolution, Chair. Thank you.
Paulson?
Chair, um. You know, um, all of us sitting here got elected on November eighth, twenty twenty-two. On November eighth, twenty twenty-two, there was a fire in West Maui. My kids were in West Maui, so, um. My husband and I hurried back, afraid that they would close the road. And, um. You know, the fire kept burning for a few days and, um. It was kind of uncertain which way the winds would go. And when you make a choice of where the water will go, it could be the choice of who's going to live and who's not going to live. In that case, um. I worked with, um, Mr. Manuel and Chief Ventura because they were able to fly the helicopters. And so we spoke with the kuliana land owners who would not have water to fight the fire if the wind blew in their direction. And they said, you know, they need the water to fight the fire, but they also don't want the whole town to burn down. And so Mr. Manuel diverted the water and it filled the reservoir. And the helicopters dipped in the reservoir and poured it on the fire. There is no way that scenario could have happened on August eighth because the fire department doesn't fly the helicopter at night. And it doesn't fly it in that strong of winds. So the news stories and all the people on the continent do not know what they're talking about. And I don't think that anybody should be forced to choose who gets water to save their life. If this is the future that we're dealing with, then we need to lobby the FAA to say the helicopter can dip from the ocean. Or we need to have the police shut the road so that they can dip from the ocean. Because this is unsustainable. And as La'uniapoko and these areas were being built, taking one hundred percent of the waters from the streams, they were told that that's not right, that's not legal as to the constitution. But because it had never been enforced and the IIFS standards had never been created for since the constitution, they felt privileged and entitled to do it. And that leaves us in the situation that we're in now where somebody has to choose who gets water that will determine whether their house will survive, whether their families will survive. And that's unsustainable going forward. If there is laws to be broken, I will break the law and dip the helicopter bucket in the ocean and put that water on the fire. Mr. Manuel, um. You know, to me, he could do any job and he could excel at it. And, um. We recently seen, um. Governor Green and family on, on the television talking about their death threats. Nobody should be getting death threats. But before Governor Green got death threats, Kaleo Manuel got death threats. And if we're not for death threats, then we're not for death threats to anybody. It's not right, especially when the highest elected official in our state fans the flames that allows death threats. I support the reinstatement of Kaleo Manuel. And thank you for this resolution.
Any more comments? Ready for the vote? Okay. I'll be voting no on this. I believe that the governor has a right to decide on his own departmental staff and organization. Rock call.
Rattan Pore Tasha Kama?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Excused.
Councilmember Paulson?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rollins Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Uhujans?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinancy?
Aye.
Council Chair Lee?
No. Are you on a vote? Ms. Clark?
Vice Chair Sugimura? Sorry about that. Thank you, 'cause I had a call.
You have to vote.
No, no, no. I took the call. So, on this, um. It's really hard. I, I want, I'm gonna vote no because I believe that there are circumstances that are beyond what we know.
Chair, we're voting, sorry, point of order.
Oh, yeah, we're voting. Discussion ready, oh, sorry.
So your vote is no?
No, yeah.
Chair, there are seven ayes, two noes. Motion passes.